Welcome everybody. Welcome in 2023. Little let's to January 10th right now, but Happy New Year for those I didn't mention it to before. Um, I made a little agenda. Uh, I'd like to go over it. It's a pretty basic one. Yeah, first want to start by welcoming back everybody after the little holiday break. Hope you all are revitalized and energized and ready for the new year. Um, let's yeah, just jump right in. Um. I've got a pretty short section on scheduled out stuff and then we can have a bit of free form afterwards. Um, first of all, there were groups and their meetings. Um. We bumped into um earlier today for the process guild. Uh, was a bit of, well, there was some people looking forward to join, but um the morning time was not ideal. So um Tiva went ahead and created a went to meet link. It's on the Discord channel. Uh, so if you're interested, please do fill it in and uh indicate when you're available. So we can get a proper time slot sorted for next week. And the exact same goes for the Treasury Guild. Uh, it might, yeah, let's, let's see what the people reply and then we can figure out what makes sense. Uh, we did have a podcast meeting yesterday with Julian. Uh, that will remain, uh, as far as I'm aware, at least it will remain at the Monday evening. So 19 UTC time slot. And yeah, on Friday, there's the social media marketing guild meeting at 13 UTC. That remains unchanged as well. So I just quickly wanted to, well, basically, yeah, for the Process Guild and Treasury Guild, please do fill in the went to meet links. So we can get those scheduled as well. And then a quick update on the tasks. Basically, as, as some of you might have noticed in your wallets or in the lack of incoming transactions to your wallets. Uh, payments for December um haven't been done yet. I planned doing that today, but there was a pretty, yeah, pretty much an onslaught of non-stop high priority stuff. Um. I think I should be able to do it tomorrow. Um, and then I'll also include the tasks which have been delivered in January. Yeah, uh, won't come up with more excuses than that. It's uh, it is what it is. Uh, but it's high on my list of priorities. Uh, I wanted to mention um a couple of translation tasks which I'll also add to DWork, but are not on there yet. Probably by the time if you are re-watching this, they will be there. Uh, that's gonna be the for the operations Q4 blog post. And there's also a blog post incoming on um SingularityNet's progress towards AGI, which we did in 2022. So also a bit of a recap blog post, uh, but really focusing on all the yeah, on all the tech stuff, um, stuff like AI DSL, OpenCarg, Hyperrun. Um, so that's popping up pretty soon uh on DWork. Um, I'll skip a little ahead to the infographic on the meeting schedule. Um, this was Votathon on Discord and the contribution of OAP1. So uh, the distribution for these rewards will be included in the distribution tomorrow. Um, I did want to touch on that. Let me quickly check if OAP is currently attending. Doesn't look like, no. Well, yes, I think, OAP, did you just pop in this instant? I was just mentioning you. Good stuff. Okay, that scared them a little. That's fine. Um, yeah, basically, um, I did realize with all the um meeting time slot stuff that the schedule might become inaccurate, the infographic that was made on it. So I would suggest for the source files of it to be shared and publicly available. So the moment um the schedule changes, we can simply adjust it and the graphic can be made up to date again. But for the at least foreseeable future until we're tired of it, I guess, um, OAP, your graphic would be used. So congrats on that. Um, I guess outside of this meeting, I'll DM you on the uh, source files to, to figure out how we can best have that available. Will simply be on the shared Google Drive, I guess.
Okay.
Um, hmm, okay. Then. Ah, yep, I wanted to um ideate a bit on, uh, I want to create a task for um this group, uh, for, for the ambassadors to um go onto the AI marketplace and test around services. Cause there's been quite a bunch of new services and there's also um updated services. And these services that have been updated in the process of updating, they have lost their reviews. Uh, so that's a bit unfortunate because now it looks like they're simply not used while some of them have thousands of users. Um, so I figured, well, since we have a decent group, we might get the reviews going. And instead of the service having only one review, um, yeah, could bump it up to, let's say about 12 and potentially more. Um, this is not to say I want to bribe you into giving a five-star review. This is, it's not the point. I, I do want to um get actual proper um correct ratings on there. If a service is shit, there's no reason to give it five stars. It's as simple as that. Uh, that being said, most of the updated ones are also improved. The updating had some function there, so um they are not shit. Um, but I, yeah, I wanted to check perhaps there's people here who have ideas on how to best go about this. Like, should we incentivize that from an ambassador program point of view? Practically speaking, putting tokens to the task? And if so, how would we go about that? Would anybody have some thoughts on that?
I think we could get a Google Doc together and then so people can kind of uh add our thoughts when they come. I guess my first consideration is like ethically, there's a way to make it work. It's just how uh to do it. Uh, yeah.
And you mean with the ethical side of things, you mean uh to prevent bribing, I guess, or, or is that correct?
Ah, yeah, of course. Yeah. Um, yeah.
We have Julian in the group. Are you interested to crowd through this and like in live action kind of? Take and basically just one by one, take a, take a service, see what it says it will do. Execute that, try to, and then we could rate like uh how easy it was to use. Did it do what it said it will do? How useful you think it's going to be? And uh, and then basically then jump to another one. Then we will could get authentic like experience of that browsing right now, the, the list of these things. I don't see anything what I could use for my work, so it should would be basically just authentic testing and auditing, but I don't know how many of these are. 75, okay, so it's if you would spend 10 minutes for each, it's 750 minutes of content. And just perhaps sampling all that and maybe doing few videos would already get people interested in, or I got the service up, could you do a video? And that's already a new like a marketing cycle we could add as a service.
I think, I think that the videos are a really good idea, but perhaps it's later on in the kind of uh, cycle of the customer. I guess initially I get, I, I see the problem as getting the word out there. And this is perhaps where the ambassador program could really help in terms of creating some kind of snowball mechanism where uh, yes, some, some kind of mild pyramid scheme where you uh uh, where like it branches out like a kind of tree. And then for every connection, there's connections and things like this. Um, for people who uh want to use the service or, or to yeah, doing this, I guess I see as a kind of bundled task that we can do it. Some kind of like uh airdrop where people have a ref link, um, something like that. But I think it's a good priority to engage the people to try out the services. Maybe this is a good opportunity that they can like, uh, you try out a service, then in uh, in response, then you write review and then you get an airdrop or something. Um, yeah.
Hmm, yeah, I can see that's working. I, I think the on, on the practical side of things, it would be easier to simply have people deliver this, this review as, as submission of work in, in, in DWork, for example. Um, ref links and stuff, we can do it. Takes quite a bit of setup though.
I guess it's about scale really. If you, if you just want to like uh just get some going, then that's definitely a good option with DWork. Um, on the grand scale, I guess this other option may work. Hmm.
Yeah, great. I don't, I understood. Um. I think right now at least my initial idea would be to not to have it like thousands and thousands of people, because well, practically speaking, we don't have a budget for incentivizing that on that skill either. Um. Hmm. Yeah, it's an interesting thought though. Um, I guess something I, yeah, more or less out of mind would be like um like if you simply tweet or um put your, your review out there somewhere on any social media, doesn't really matter, uh, that would already be enough. But then maybe we could do like um checkout five services, for example, and then that would be the task.
I could also.
Let's go in.
Um, I was gonna say, this actually sounds like a cool idea for a video, like video type stuff that I could or whoever is interested could do like a live stream and kind of go over them. Um, and I don't need to get anything from, you know, um, the rewards or whatever, like as a task. I, cause to me it's like especially where I haven't been able to get anybody in for interviews lately. This is like a goldmine for content, so the way I was thinking about it is maybe do like a live stream and go over. Maybe like Tiva, like Tevo said, go down from the top and just go through live, like as a live stream and just do like live reactions. And then if that goes well, like you could timestamp it and maybe do like some shorts um, of some of the more interesting ones. I don't know. That's just came to mind for me. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that or.
I think definitely, uh, if you don't mind me jumping in, um, I think definitely at the point with accessibility, it's about getting out there. I guess uh, one thing I think of with DWork for instance is it's another gate that people have to sign up to and get involved in, another platform to learn and in order to use. And I think if you wanted to keep it really simple, like Telegram is probably one of your, wow, it's your most active group. You're trying to move them over to Discord. I think that maybe you can use an ultra simple Discord bot like um for instance, if you have Ajix token uh registered with tip.cc, then you can just do a really simple uh kind of airdrop um or uh something like that for people um in a Discord chat. So I've seen it for instance before where uh it's just a certain amount of tokens, then whoever claims it in that group can get a percentage of the prize depending on uh the number of people who submit. So I think, yeah, that, that might be a good option for kind of moving people from Telegram onto Discord because Discord has that usability. Um, can kind of incentivize that move over rather than making another gate for DWork. And it's probably very few people who are gonna do that.
Hmm, yeah, understood. I completely get what you're coming from. I do want to point out a side note that DWork works with Discord login. So for a Telegram user, they would still need to get a Discord um um account, but yeah, but it does make sense to keep it as low barrier as, as possible. Um, yeah, definitely look into getting a bot like that, not just for this specific context, but in general would be um cool to experiment with.
If it's registered on tip.cc, uh, the token, then it's possible to do that through the bot, tip.cc, yeah.
Okay, cool. Uh, right now I don't think it is, but that should be straightforward, I assume, or I hope. Um, yeah, and Julian, as you mentioned, um or actually as Tiva mentioned, it's with the amount of services on there, it's potentially tons of content. Um, yeah, it's definitely interesting. Could perhaps function as a kind of a backup as well, like if in the schedule, if there, um, if there's a gap for whatever reason. Uh, the marketplace will be there and the services will be there, so, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think one of the like tasks or thing we could add on to once if, if the Julian goes through the video stuff. What, for example, imagine the taking one, just not doing like bunch of testing in all in one huge video, but just one service, one video, and then a task could be about how do you measure how good these services and people just coming up with ideas, okay. First usability, the simplest stuff I mentioned, but somebody then comes up with more measurements and getting this kind of, and this, this service up front of people to see how it's usable and what kind of services there are, and then also measuring how they perceive how easy it was to understand, how useful it is, etc. And then you're gonna start building like the reputation of, oh, if I get and then you basically do like hmm, we, we do more of these videos, but you don't really get everybody to look at this service. But uh, but you have like, I got a top three, like the best usability service was this and the best uh, easy use service was that. And then gonna do this like top ones. And this way, but yeah, this all comes down to how far could we reach that? So if you could get the top videos, then boost that by SingularityNet. Then it will get this developers who actually put the services up here more uh, like incentivized to get attention from ambassador. Hey, I've just put the service up, could you check, could you measure it, could you get community around? And they would maybe perhaps even their service come to Discord and share it down. Hey, I got service up and can you analyze it? Because if they know that SingularityNet will look at that if it gets like a high scores from the community. So it goes a bit of like a reputational style. It will take probably like six or more months to build up that reputation, but in the end, it's a way to start.
Yeah, I like that.
And that could, all of that could be actually a proposal for T-Fund because they're expecting market marketing ideas and that is one of them.
Hmm, hmm. Yeah, I think it's part of it might be just getting in there and doing, you know, just doing like a single review and seeing kind of what comes from it. Because I think what could happen is you will learn a lot about where to go with things or what kind of, you know, framework or what kind of perspective we wanna look at it through or frame the video. Um, like how we wanna frame it all just by getting in there and seeing the impressions that we have. And I think that we'll, I'll just getting in there and doing something that will kind of build on more questions and more guidance on where to go with it. I think you'll learn a lot that way. And yeah, that's, that's great. Like if, if anyone ever, like when new AI marketplace, um, you know, tools are, are put on there. I'd definitely be happy to like look at that for people, like so if anyone wants to let me know or obviously I do my best to keep involved as things are coming out. But yeah, definitely letting someone know, hey, this just came out. Like I'd be happy to look at new stuff as it comes into it. That'd be, that'd be great. And incentivizing it, yeah, with like this stuff that's valuable, boosting it with SingularityNet. Um, through whatever Twitter or something and yeah, that'll, I think that would incentivize new developers to come in. Cause they know they're actually gonna get some eyes on it, at least a little bit of feedback.
Another thing I noticed here, there are no labels for this service. So that could be another thing community could do is label. This is an image recognition and it's dealing with face recognition because I see a lot of these similar things, but just different services. And I basically categorize this right now, which fine, it's like 75 services. But if it's gonna be like in future thousand services, it's do you want the 105th image recognition to recognize your face? Maybe not, but then that could also that, the, the set of services SingularityNet has. And that's a feedback to SingularityNet website developers, like, oh, okay, we how, how do we could, we organize this service marketplace?
Yeah, definitely agree with that. Um, to be uh, well, for, for, for context, um, if, if you check out the server, um, a surface, there's a, below the overview, there's a tags section. So more than half of the work there is already done. Um, it's just navigation on the marketplace based on tags. I think doesn't work or it's not implemented, but the services do have tags, so yeah.
Um, yes, now when I open them up, I see the tags here, but yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, but if not functional, then there's not much use, is there? I mean, it does help um for the search function, but yeah. The whole idea of tags is that you click a tag and see corresponding services with that tag, so. I do, but I, I do know that and hoping internally to see if we can get that first. Um, alternatively, something or next to that, something which I personally find annoying that it's not implemented is the sort by function. Sort by new um would be good as well.
Another small thing that I'm just noticing here, maybe it's just me, but I think it could be nice to have the ability to um, to organize everything out to like a bigger, to basically instead of having to scroll down like, like Tevo, Tevo was saying, when we get thousands and even with 75 is being able to put the order of everything out into a bigger into like a wider space where you could see all of them laid out together and you could, it might be better or easier to scroll through something that actually interests you instead, as opposed to just scrolling down with your finger endlessly. Um, obviously it's only 75 now, so it's not that long, but having that functionality, I think, could be useful maybe for people.
Hmm, there's some of that. Um, there's a complete box. You can uh select for items per page being 12, 24, 30. So there's some of that. Um, yeah, at the same time.
Okay.
I guess technically it could be just one big list. I'm not sure what, what's holding that back.
What I mean is like, instead of having it be just like um a vertical scroll is like having like a big, almost like um collage, not really collage isn't the right word, but being able to see, yeah, like a Myra board where everything is all, like you could look at potentially like all of it on like your phone in one image, maybe not that much, but maybe like 20 items right there. Where it's large enough for you to see what it is, but not so small that, you know, but so not overwhelmingly small to where you can't get what's going on, like just having it laid out wider and more images per like phone or port or I mean, obviously I know when you look at it on your computer, it's laid out like that, but that's what I mean, like more more like that for the phone. Uh, I mean, I guess most people are gonna be looking at this maybe on their computer anyway, so maybe it's not useful, but.
No, it's part of usability, uh, so yeah.
Basically, you describe the task to create an infographic for marketplace. So we use the data we have from the website. There are tags, we can use that. And there are links to that and then we just keep copy pasting and basically converting that to the Myra board version and we can organize it visually. And coupled with the idea of if you do some videos about that, then like few videos of each of these and then coupled with another task, if, how, what, how to measure a service on AI platform? What are all the measures we could and then running around the forum about that in Telegram, Discord and between meetings that, what are your thoughts? How to measure it?
That's a really nice question.
Um, then we have a pretty holistic dataset and perhaps then something for marketing could also make just nice. And then maybe in two, three months, we have a impactful overview, which is like two minutes long, has some data source, has a Myra board link, which has bunch of more resources which could be boosted through SingularityNet. And if, yeah, if we were fast on that, we probably could use that, but the prototype to ask some more funding from T-Fund because it's marketing a debt, it's specifically addresses marketplace. And that could probably could also incentivize people to be part of T-Fund, then also create content and also addressing what Peter's saying. Doing stuff for SingularityNet and addressing marketplace visibility and usability.
Awesome. Ah, much to be done, but good stuff. Uh, I think in a lot of time, maybe um should park the topic for now, if it makes sense. Um, yeah, let's do that and then we can revisit. Um, it's just a couple of small things I do want to touch on. Um, hmm. Oh, yeah, and uh, actually an additional note on the infographic um for the meeting schedule. Uh, when we created the task, um, we said that would be, when they chosen out of five applications. However, their task wasn't closed until there were seven applications. Uh, so I suggest to simply, um, we did reserve 2000 tokens for uh the task to be split among the contributors. And I guess to, so that would be 400 tokens each, but I'd suggest to simply maintain that 400 each and spend 800 extra tokens. Just quickly wanted to check in if anybody has any big moral objections to that. Now would be the time to speak. Cool. Uh, let's see. I could have sworn there were more topics I wanted to touch on. Um, well, I guess, um, it could be nice to have a bit of a status report, let's say, on, on both the podcast group and the marketing guild, since we have both Julian and Crandano in here.
Sounds good. Um, so recently, I posted a video, this is Julian, um, from the podcast, um, the Community Podcast. Um, I did a video, uh, wrapping up a short, like twenty-minute wrap-up, I don't know, twenty minutes isn't really that short, but compared to two hours, it's considerably shorter, I would say, uh, on the inside SingularityNet Pod Leader, uh, later December meeting. Um, so I posted that in the Community Discord, uh, for the Community Podcast. Um, it's on my YouTube channel there, um, and I'll paste it here, um, in the chat as well, but yeah, if anyone's listening to this later, you can see that, um, in there in the Community Podcast, um, server on our Discord for SingularityNet. Um, I've also been working on, um, a proposal for the podcast, um. I've never really done anything quite like this before, so it's been, you know, a lot of kind of figuring out how to frame this, what, what, um, what to actually do, what to ask for, like what, you know, what is feasible and what is fair for myself and the community, which has been somewhat difficult, I mean, I've been learning more and more and kind of just continuously tweaking it. Still not quite there, I have a lot of thoughts that you can read, I, I posted that in there, uh, on the in the chat here as well, but that'll also be, it's like a couple of posts back in the Community, um, Podcast Server as well. Um, and that will just get constantly updated as I go in there and tweak it. Um, I'm, I have a lot of different ideas, like for what I wanna do, but, um, it's just trying to figure out like what's a reasonable amount to ask for, and then framing everything around that, just to make sure, you know, because depending on how much I get from that, um, obviously I've been getting, I don't know if it's obvious, but I've been getting, uh, money from Swarm as well, but the whole idea between with that was to try to eventually, when the time comes where these sort of things happen, to, you know, uh, see if I can get some funding through something else, like through this, through deep funding or through Catalyst. And so that's why I'm doing it here, and, you know, just depending on what, how it's framed and if it's successful, will determine like how much work I have to do outside with my other jobs that I've still had to keep as of right now, um, and so it's just kind of like, I just spoke, uh, with Yon, and I've been speaking with, I haven't spoken with Yon, but I just, uh, touched base with him, and I'm gonna touch base about everything and see what his opinions are and everything, and me and Peter have been talking a lot, uh, lately, um, about everything, and so we're just kind of chiseling down on it, making it better and better, and it's, you know, um, some of it may have to come off, and some of it may, I'm sure there'll be some stuff added, but there's a considerable amount in there so far. Um, I haven't, um, gotten word back from Connor from Mindplex or Marcello um, from SingularityDAO, um, uh, the, um, the interviews there. Um, I am hoping to get something back from them as soon as possible, but, um, I don't know about Diane, I know Diane had some stuff with Diane Kraus with, um, the, uh, Jam Galaxy Band, um, that I'm not sure how far out that is, I know they had to kind of do some secret stuff that I'm not quite sure what it was, but that was holding back, because we were already gonna do that interview as well, um. A, like, um, I, I mean, I'd like to do more of these, but it's just dependent on people, um, you know, actually, you know, being able to do it and having the time and stuff and getting back to me. So, um, I have some new ideas, um, I've been talking with Peter about, um, some new guests and stuff like that, and I'd like to do more and more, that's definitely a big goal, is to, in a perfect world, like at least like one of those an interview, podcast interview per week would be great. Um, I know it's hard, because people are busy, but I think it'll get easier and easier, um, as we go, and I get, you know, more integrated with everybody, and there's more stuff to show, and there's more things happening, and I learn more and more about new people, um, so yeah, if anyone wants to come on and do an interview, um, or has ideas, feel free to let me know, because, um, I've been severely lacking in that, uh, category. Um, but yeah, it's been, I don't know, it was, it was a cool, uh, few months there, getting to do this whole podcast thing, I had never done it before, and, uh, it's, I don't know, it's quite fun, but also quite, um, I don't know, it's just a difficult thing to do, to, to do like a live podcast and try to keep everything going, it's it's harder in some ways than you would expect, uh, I think even that I would expect even have listened to and watched a lot over the years, but it's a fun challenge, and I was hoping I would enjoy it, and I have been. Um, so yeah, like that's basically where, um, I've been leaning is to do, I really like doing the interviews, as I've said before, on these, and coming up with the questions and all that, and then, um, I also would like to eventually start doing, I've been doing these inter additional kind of wrap-ups for the SingularityNet, inside SingularityNet Pod Leader meetings, which has been good for content, but yeah, I'm just trying to find new content, like this marketplace tool idea, I see some promise with that, but, um, eventually I would like to start, um, finding specific topics and diving into them a little bit more, and maybe like taking like over a month period, you know, figuring out what I wanna do, researching it, shooting the video, editing it, and posting it, and like doing that on a semi-regular basis is something that I can see. I mean, enjoy, I mean, I'm kind of been, I've really been just kind of chronicling the, the events and stuff, and that's cool, but it's a little bit different to come up with like a specific topic and kind of dive into that more, and having like a talking piece idea, which I do talk about in the proposal, um. And then I have other ideas too, there's a lot in the proposal there you can take a look at, but I'll leave it there for now, but yeah.
Yeah, cool stuff, um. I haven't taken a look myself yet, uh, to the proposal, but definitely, well. Yeah, I'm curious, and even though you say it can be hard at times, you do make it look easy, so, yeah.
That's funny, some have gone easier than others, like, um, I don't know, I, it's funny when you do these things, you realize the amount of likes and ums, and it's just like, you just wanna bury yourself in a hole.
Yeah, very true, I do, I do have that experience as well with, uh, well, with these, these meetings. This is terrible.
But it is good, it's fun to, it's, it's cool to do something where you can actually look at it, like it's, it's fun to do something and be able to go back and like study, or like just even notice while you're doing it, um, to see like, to get that feedback in real time, and it's just interesting, and seeing how you can reframe stuff a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. All right, uh, thanks a lot for sharing that. Um, perhaps Crandano, would you be able to, well, share a bit about, um, the Marketing Guild, and perhaps your plans or some, anything you want, really? If you are around, that is. I do see you unmuted, but I don't hear anything.
Hear me now?
Tactical. Yeah, that's better.
Um, currently, we're set to meet Friday at thirteen UTC for Marketing Guild. Um, I might see if anyone wants to change the schedule of the Marketing Guild, kind of like what Process and Treasury Guild are doing right now. Um, to see if a different day or time works moving forward, but this Friday we'll keep the same time, thirteen UTC, and then update next week if there's any changes. Um, I'm currently locked out of the Twitter again, so I'm waiting on a response on that. Um, we have an infographic winner now, thanks everyone that had submissions. And we had a lot of good ideas in the last meeting. Uh, for instance, competition to create an ambassador intro. I could really use someone or multiple people within the guild that want to help out with setting up and following up on tasks, as well as feedback. Um, so come hang out on Friday and bring your ideas.
Awesome, thank you, that reminds me of the oh, sorry.
Where is the feedback collected? Somewhere in forum or in the meeting itself?
Um, in the Marketing Guild, I've, I've got a couple posts from, from last month, I could use some feedback about tasks and reward amounts for things like, uh, like the competition for an ambassador intro.
Yeah, I think there's two threads in there, one on task ideation and one on, uh, Twitter post ideation.
Okay, there is, now I hold it, yeah.
And you actually reminded me about the session we had from the Marketing Guild, uh, together with, uh, Raynor on, on YouTube stuff too, which unfortunately the recording turned out to be without audio. Um, so we have to do a little redo on that session. Um, in all honesty, I think this week might be a bit short notice and packed on video side of things, um. I will check in, uh, with Raynor to see, uh, for availability there. And then I, I guess if we redo it, uh, maybe we can just have somebody go through the process, um, live, and then you know, based on the earlier instructions, it should be doable.
Yeah, and really even if, if Raynor has time sometime, whether it's this week or in the future, just to make like a five-minute video going over what he did, that, that would even be helpful if he's pretty busy right now.
Yeah, absolutely, and yeah, I agree, that would be cool. Yep. Noted. Yeah, then I guess, uh, I, I do have, uh, one thing I want to call out, that's, um, coming, uh, Thursday. Uh, so two days from now, there's, uh, an AMA, um, on basically all things SingularityNet for twenty twenty-three. Um, there will be, let's see, Ben will be on there, uh, Janet will be, um, Matty Clay or, uh, Chief AI Officer will be on there, and Jan Horlings too, I think. Um, there's a forum, I will put that on the event, uh, event chat, where you can, uh, submit questions if you have any, um, so yeah, just wanted to call that out, uh, do join in if you, uh, if you have the time. And otherwise, just watch it back, because it will be on YouTube. And I think that pretty much covers my not sure if it works for you, it's having trouble here. Um, next meeting is not on January tenth, it would be on the seventeenth, um. But yeah, that does conclude what I wanted to mention, but there's definitely space for, um, yeah, any questions, any thoughts to add, um, any ideas? It's all very welcome. And if nobody has anything to add right now, then, um, I think that concludes the meeting, and we can, uh, continue to play this putty golf together after the recording is finished, so thanks all for joining. And, yeah, we'll see each other on, uh, on Discord or in one of the other meetings this week. Thanks a lot.